Hello everyone and welcome to a very special show. This is the 25th anniversary for the nicest men I've ever served with in government. And I'm going to introduce them to you now. 25 years ago on actually May 13th, so we're a few days ahead of that anniversary. That four new people got elected. The only one that got re-elected was the most popular one, former mayor Jim Parent. And Jim, you mentioned that earlier. You were the only one that, and it's, what was the last time you had had a situation where that occurred? Were 53, I think you said?
1953 was the last time that four incumbents lost. And we have four new incumbents, four new commissioners that were elected. It's the first time, so.
So Jim, you were with those incumbents and tell everybody who the four were that didn't make it.
Vicki Marshall, the big one was, the first one, yeah. But the shock was, in fact, I made some notes here because I got some old time stuff I kept. Don't ask me why. But Rob Shannon, first of all.
Yeah, that was a shock.
That was.
Was Rob the mayor? He was the mayor at the time.
Yeah, but then Emil Tofolo was the mayor.
Yeah, what happened, yeah, Rob stepped down as being a mayor and, you know, it was as hard as we tried to keep him on. This is a true story. I don't mind saying it to people, you know, but Emil wanted to be the mayor. He didn't have the votes. I had the votes and I didn't want to take it because I felt if I put him in that little chair, I'd get rid of him. Exactly what happened. You know, I mean, I'll be honest with you.
Well, you're always honest, Jim.
You just pulled all kinds of stuff out here. 25 years later, that boot is silly using its way out.
I didn't even know that.
Yeah, well, the thing is, is that, you know, you have to learn how to play the game politics. That's all.
Oh, yeah. I think you wrote the book.
Yeah, well, a little bit. But, you know, but it was a big shock when Rob lost. You know, I mean, it really was. He did so much, but there was some controversy at that time on the big bond for, you know, soccer complex and things, Jim, if you remember.
Yes, it was, Jim. Yeah, the Soccer Association.
And it was, he really got beat up on that. You know, and, you know, Rob is, Rob is a great friend of mine and always will be. Vicki Marshall lost, the first woman elected, first of all, you know, on this city commission. Very smart lady. Yeah. Dave Adaman lost, whatever. But Van Hook lost, Emil. And in fact, in the article, there's a news article, you know, you're crazy to me, I keep everything from all the way back then. I'm going to throw this out.
That's when the paper had some guts in it, a little meat in it, huh?
This was the headlines, you know, back, you know, when.
97, right?
1997 headlines in the Daily Journal, the incumbents that won, you know, it was somewhat of a shock that the incumbents lost to some outstanding candidates though, you know.
Well, you know what, Jim? I wanted to mention that, look at the ones, the two right here with Joe and Jeff. My theory has been, going back to Ed Salmond, even Ethan Aaronoff, teachers do very, very well and coaches, teachers and coaches do extremely well because they're liked and, you know, you know that.
You communicate.
You coach on the digital level. I coached on little softball, Little League and stuff, but that's an advantage because all the lives that Jeff, you touched through the years, and not only that, but you coached the baseball, you had your history classes and Joe, you had your phys ed classes, then you attached.
You deal with a lot of families and kids and parents and all, you know, you built up a reputation with that.
Definitely. It does help. I mean, no question.
And also.
You touched a lot of lives.
Yeah, and also you're competitive by nature, so when you run, you want to win, you know.
Yeah, that's the coach.
No sense, yeah, no sense running if you don't want to win, so.
That's the athlete in you.
Yeah. You got to tell everybody who encouraged you to run.
You did. I got the, I'll never forget the phone call and you, he said, you got to run for city commission this time. We need, we need help down there, this, that and the other. Then about three weeks later, you decided to run.
It's like you're Son of a Gun, 20 and 21 to me.
I'm so glad you did because I didn't want to be mayor, I tell you that. I mean, you lost by about 150 votes, right?
I know, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, so it worked out good for me and for you, but I'm proud of those times.
And the question, I'm proud of you because the question I have is finishing second, you were the first person, no, Joe Pepitone finished third and he took public safety. Why did you decide to take public safety?
I mean, you know, I didn't really, I didn't know the, the history of the commission as well as you guys did. And I ran on a platform that was to improve, you know, clean the city up and more law, tougher law enforcement training, better training and all that kind of stuff. So I just, I just took it and I got, I got a look from all you guys when I said, I'll take, I'll take public safety because it's a very difficult department. I'm dealing with the most, you know, a lot of people, the largest budget, you know, and the most issues simply because of the, the nature of the, of the department, you know? But it, it had its challenges, but we did some good things, you know? We improved training, you guys supported me and all that stuff. I remember the first, I think we increased taxes once, did we? I think the first year? I'm not sure, but I remember a lot of that was on the back of my shoulders and I really appreciated that.
We did add officers, we did do a few things.
Yeah, we hired some officers, we did some new, we bought some training equipment, we had to buy a new fire truck, truck at some point. We, you know, we had to do a lot of things, so, but I got, I got your support. So I, I, you know, I look back at those years, I'm, I'm not, it was, it was, it's tough, it was a difficult department, but I, I look back on it fondly, you know?
Yeah, I'll tell you what, Jeff, I was your backup and I went over a lot of times and would ride with the guys and stuff. You had some great people.
Oh, man.
And Bill Herman was the chief and I knew you had a great relationship with him. And I think he had asked you, if I remember correctly, would you consider, you know, taking public safety and to your credit, you did. And I'll tell you, some of the finest officers, you had some great, great people there. Herman did a really good job and, you know, things, things were good.
Yeah, it was, it was good. And they do, they do a tremendous job. They're so important, you know?
Yeah, they really are.
And especially in today's world, you know, the, it's a, it's a difficult job to be a police officer and firefighter, but a police officer in particular. And, you know, you need to be well-trained for lots of reasons and, you know, they deal with, you know, some very questionable people a lot of times and they need to be supported and they need to be protected and they need to be taken care of as far as training and so on and so forth. And so I'm glad I could be a small part of that in the last, you know, 25 years or so.
Yeah, it was a big step in the right direction, that was for sure. You know, Joe.
I was lucky. I'm number five, I'm figuring I got public safety.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't know what I was getting into, but.
It was always the one that finished fifth.
I had finished fifth historically. Saying, hey, welcome aboard.
I thought he was doing you a favor.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, I had a good time. I, you know, I did some of the hearings when you had the challenging efforts with some of the officers when the discipline had to come through and you needed to have a hearing officer, so I sat on some of those and very, very interesting.
I had the back, I had your backs the whole time and I appreciate that. And, and so that, that meant a lot as well. You didn't leave me out on an island. So if I needed any help, if I needed anything, and I got finance, I got the mayor and I got Joey with me, I mean, we, we worked, it worked out.
Well, you know what, Jeff, speaking of that, I've served 33 and a half years in government, 18 and a half because we extended the election when Timmy was mayor, we went to.
To November, correct.
So that gave me that extra half year. But in all of those years, I never, ever had a better group of people to work with than you three and John.
Yep.
You know, if we, if we could, George, put a picture of John Hollings set up because we want to mention him. What a super, there's John, he's next to Joe on the, on the left-hand side of your screen. He's to the right of me, actually. But what a wonderful man, volunteer firefighter, one of the gentlest, kindest people. And Jim, you and he were very good friends. You guys had sort of.
Well, yeah, you know, the thing, you know, John, you know, didn't have a father, he had a father, but he was raised by his mother.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, some tough times. He saved a baby's life as a firefighter. You know, truly a, not just a commissioner, but a very good friend.
And he had such a nice way about him. He was a brilliant gentleman. You know, we talked, we'd laugh, we'd go over to Jim's lunch, have lunch. Of course, I'd have to pay, we all knew that.
Jeff, I have a quick story with him and Al Smith and myself. We'd be playing golf and John and Al Smith would throw out, you know, the score already before they even played. They had a couple of pars. I'll never forget that. The scorecard's already filled out. Go play and have a good time and have an adult beverage. Anyway, good times, good memories with John, you know?
It was great to work with all of us. I mean, we had our challenges, but we always made sure that we came out and worked together and showed that you done it fine.
Yeah, yeah. It was a vocal time. We had a lot of, we had a lot of vocal citizens at the time too. You know, to their credit, hey, they challenged us on a lot of things. They asked a lot of questions and to their right, it's their, it's their right to do it.
One of those crazy things, wasn't crazy at the time, but putting lights on Wheaton Field.
Yeah. Jimmy, that was because of your.
Well, you know, but still, you know, I mean, it was, you know, the Taxpayers Association, Straw Miller and that group, I'll never forget it.
Boy, they were tough.
Tough. God bless Joyce Vanneman, the true story, you know, I get old for these things, but they really controlled the commission meetings before I came in.
Who did?
Straw Miller.
Taxpayer.
Yeah, they filibustered every meeting, you know, there was no time limit on them.
Correct, right.
I was the first one put a time limit, five minutes. And I'll never forget it, you know, they definitely didn't like it, but I'm, you know, just felt it, you know, say your piece, do what you want to do. You're going to have five minutes, but they would just hammer and hammer.
You can say a lot in five minutes.
Yeah.
People don't understand.
Almost everything negative too.
Negative, they were just negative people. Didn't matter whether it was the city, a school board, whatever, they were just so negative. And he came up, Joyce Vanneman was standing up next to him, he'd go to reach his hand out to shake my hand and say, Jim, I thought we were friends. Well, you know me, I just squeezed his hand and said, George, we were never friends. A few other obstacles or whatever, but you can't let people control your meetings.
I remember Jimmy getting hot on her collar a couple of them meetings.
So Joe, you had Public Works?
I had inspections and permits.
Public Affairs.
Public Affairs was called then, so yes, I had that. Kind of ran on that, you know, as far as, you know, trying to step up inspections, which was already in place, but tried to streamline that and improve the, improve the department. Again, support across the board from everybody here, you know, Milt Trucksden was the construction officer at the time and we took some recommendations from him and he grew that office over a two-year period to offer everything. I mean, it brought in about $300,000 a year to the taxpayer and helped us with our budget and became a model for the state of New Jersey over time. And we also put in, you know, walking patrols in the summertime. We hired some, you know, some teachers and some students that were eligible to be able to check and count meters on the walls and we caught dozens and dozens of illegal conversions that we end up going in and inspecting and then charging the fees and doing everything else. So that was, you know, it was one of the other efforts we did and then we instituted the phone line, everybody left the bat at 825 ugly.
Yeah.
And that was an obvious thing where you could call in.
You were into that, that was great.
And you could make that in, yeah, it worked out great.
We were into cleaning up the city, weren't we? I mean, mowing your grass, getting the stuff out of your yard, keeping the grass cut, cleaning the streets, the street sweepers, how many issues did we have with that when we first, we started that with it?
Yep, yep. And other cities followed, you know, Bridgeton still does it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I had that department. It was very, very interesting, challenging, you know, the permits that you got to issue and contractors calling and being upset because, you know, you're not following, you're not following rules, you're not following that book. And we were fortunately had a very nice crew in there that sometimes got criticism because they were following and making sure that construction was done safely. And people forget.
They were used to, they were used to just getting away and some things.
Getting away. You know, nail so many fart on a roof. I learned all this stuff because, you know, Milt would explain everything in detail and then, you know, there were times that they would come in, you know, in the major construction project that we had going on, you know, Union Lake Crossing, Motorsport Estates, but they would come in early in the morning and inspect the footings, knowing that these guys were on timeframe to get those things done. So they would come in at six o'clock in the morning as they're pouring, giving the approval, circle back, you know, and then come back later in the afternoon and do the second inspection. So they were, they were cooperative wherever they could to keep the city moving forward from a construction standpoint. So learned, learned, learned a lot.
We'll be back to talk about some of the wonderful things we were able to do. And as I look at that ugly city hall, we did something good for ugly city hall. We'll tell you what that is right after these messages.
I'm Brian Lang and third generation business owner, Al Shoes, been at the same location since 1961, our 61st year. We specialize in work boots, work shoes, orthopedic shoes, baby walking shoes and school shoes. We go up to a men's 17 and a woman's 13. It's $5 off 25 and 10 off 100 if you mention that you've seen this.
More than a century ago, General Tire was born, right here in America. Since then, we've made a name for ourselves by making tires you can depend on. Tires built to handle any road this country can throw at them and relied on by every kind of driver. So you know that no matter where life takes you, with General Tire, anywhere is possible.
At Complete Care, we are patients serving patients. I choose to bring myself and my children to Complete Care because we are a one-stop-shop. We use dental, we use medical. I feel as though the quality of care here is great. I love working here. I feel great to work at a place that services the community. There's a lot of people in need. To me, patients serving patients means we've been in your shoes. We know what great care means to us and we want to provide that for you.
Jim Quinn along with Jim Parent, Joe Dorella and Jeff Trout. The four of us just about 25 years ago were sworn in as city commissioners for the city of Millville and it was a great four years in my opinion. And on top of Jim's shoulder, you see a little bit of the top of the mural, which was put on there with no city money. It was George Curio. He was the executive director of the Millville Chamber of Commerce and he had a dream to honor the 1941, you know, the airport and the people that gave their lives. And I actually remember the guy's name that did it, Sam Donovan did the mural. And the mural was $30,000, again, no taxpayer money being used. And it set off what I think is not one of the nicest looking buildings that's around. I like the Deerfield Township, you know, some of the ones that are sort of the normal brick. This was weird because when you think about this, where the mayor's office was and the third floor, we had a lot of leaking problems because that was thrown in after the building was built, that was added Jimmy later on. But anyway, it functions, I guess, for what they needed it to function for, but I am happy that we were all supportive of putting the mural on the side of the building. And Jimmy, we all got together, that sort of cast to us, what can we do to revitalize Millville, downtown especially? Before we got on, you had taken and putting in all the pavers, you had made the riverfront look better, we got rid of the junkyard, the gas station, all that kind of stuff.
Wasn't without controversy, believe me.
Yeah, but at least you stood up and did it.
The thing was, is that, you know, going in, at least I had some experience in government, you know, being involved in, at the state level. But the one thing that we had is a river running through the heart of your city.
Yes, we still do.
And what happened, yeah, what happened was the wild scenic was coming in.
Oh, yeah, thank God that you were there.
Oh, me, you know, I wanted to have the riverfront not developed as far as buildings, home businesses. The recommendation from our planning department and economic development was, hey, that's great, we can put boutiques down the river, you know, and all this. I'm going, no, 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 no. I thought it was important to have something coming in. You cross the bridge, something beautiful. And that's the riverfront. You know, if you remember what it used to look like, there was a gas station on the corner. It really wasn't a gas station, they had a bunch of tires there. You had a junkyard right next to that going up Buck Street. You know, you had all that.
For years, for years and years and years, yeah.
And, and of course there at Main and Buck, you had the Vanneman Building, it looked like that was going to fall down at any time. And you go all the way up, you had old buildings, but we had something very important and that's that riverfront, that river. And I just wanted to make sure that we didn't overdevelop it, make sure that it's something that the city will have for years and that when you cross that bridge, you see something beautiful, you know?
Well, you know what, Jim, too, when we first got elected, that first block, you already hit on, Vanneman's Building was falling down, Newbury's Building was falling down, Frank's, Ben's and Boyshop's Buildings were closed. The only building in that first block was AA Sales, which was like a flea market building that had mattresses out on the front sidewalk. And the Nestor Building was contaminated and something needed to be done with that. We did have Hal Hardware as you went down the corner. So what we were all able to do was, we were able to get through, you know, UZ fundings or whatever we needed to do, get rid of the Nestor Building.
That's correct.
Bob Connor and a group of people came in and built that nice office building where the Nestor Building was. And the Vanneman Building went down, so that, you know, you had, in fact, there's an Italian restaurant there now. And then the front, and this is an interesting story, High Street, you know, where the AA Sales Building was, we all invested and, you know, we talked to Kim Ayers, we talked to Don Ayers, we talked to people that, what can we do? Barry Taylor from Wheaton Arts and all that, and we talked about an arts district. And what was really great was all of us voted to take those Frank's, Ben's and Boyshop Buildings, the three small buildings, and make that the riverfront Renaissance Center for the arts. And that was just about 2000, I believe it was around 22 years ago that that happened and we were all there to support that. And I will never forget, I think it was $675,000 to purchase the buildings through the renovations and all that, which was not a bad value. Well, Mike Galliano was the contractor that got the bid to do the buildings.
Correct.
So I was talking with him one day and he goes, you know, Mayor, you really think this arts district's going to work? I said, yeah, I do, I sincerely do. He said, okay. So he went and bought the AA Sales Building, put a couple of million dollars into it, renovated it. That's where now, Guacamole is there now, but that's a beautiful new building on the, you know, front, the first block of High Street. So we had that and then the RRCA and, you know, the Millville Development Corporation and office and it still does in that building. And that was one of our big draws when we came up with the idea of Third Friday, you know, when, and we were able, by the way, we were able to get 14 pioneer artists in. And Jeff, you were talking before we went on the air about you going to Collingswood and some of these unique communities, right? The mayor of Collingswood, Mallory, I think's his last name, at one point in time, he and I and the mayor of Red Bank did a dog and pony show all over the state. They'd invite us to come in and talk about how we revitalized, all of us together, revitalized our downtown. And that was an honor, it really was. We had, we went from 50% vacancy to about 90, 95% occupancy, you know, and it's not good now, but.
Where are we now?
Gosh, I don't even think we're 50% occupancy.
No, we were, you know, it was kind of, it's frustrating to a certain degree. We were moving.
Positive, yeah.
You know, and it just, whatever, but.
But you know what happens?
There's a lot of potential still here.
But what happens when you talk to the old time merchants, the investment we all did and tried to do down there, losing business to the Cumberland Mall, you know, I mean, that's, that was one of the reasons. Millville people just still did not want to shop downtown.
That drove us to making that decision to change it and make it more of an entertainment district and moving forward in that direction because we saw that the Hyatt Palmer Report, which I know you were part of getting that thing studied and all that feasibility, which led to all the improvements in regards to infrastructure and lighting and all the things that were done, which set the stage for a theme to move forward with that, you know, which led to the docks that are now down there that are very attractive and very useful. And then the Riverwalk that we have all the way through, Stewart Estate, we finally got that through, that walk through that, that preserve there that goes all the way up to the dam. I mean, there was a lot of things we did along that river.
Yeah.
That are still very active, very popular today.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, but again, timing too, you know, we seemed to, we were, we were kind of positioned fairly well as the infrastructure was in place and then again, sticking together and having a very similar agenda, which was let's make where we live a little bit better and let's stick together and.
I think, Joe, what happens was, was we had professional people on staff.
That's just what I was going to say, Jeff.
Really saw five commissioners coming in there that had a vision and a plan, not just a vision without a plan, you know, where we wanted to go, things we wanted to accomplish. We had Kim Walker, so aggressive and doing the things she can do. You know, Lou Thompson, city administrator, you know, I don't want to forget Lou. Thought maybe sometimes what are you guys trying to do, but, you know, we.
He kept the straight. Yeah, he asked a lot of tough questions and he had, and he's got.
Yeah, that's important.
And Rich McCarthy, you know?
You know, it wasn't done without a solid team, you know?
Well, Jim, the thing that I always admired that you said, and then when you guys weren't there and I was there, like without you three, I realized what you said was so very, very important and we're sort of talking about that now. It's your administrators that make you what you are. And we were so blessed to have Lou Thompson, Rich McCarthy, Kim Ayers, Don Ayers, John Newt, Susan Robestella.
Tommy Wickward, all those guys.
Exactly, Tommy Wickward.
All born and raised, they really, really wanted to see the city succeed.
And Milt Trucksden and then with my case.
They loved the city.
Ralph Lee, all these guys.
Yeah, exactly.
They really cared.
They all got on board with us too. And they, yeah, it was, it was good working with them.
It was a little push at the beginning, I mean, that they were like, eh, you know, but again, you're right.
Change is always difficult, you know? We were kind of, we were kind of moving toward doing some things a little bit different with regard to downtown and some other, some other things.
I think one of the positive things, Jeff, that we were doing was professional contracts.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going out to get people now, request for proposals and then put that together and make sure we get the best bang for the buck that was out there and, and they're still doing that today. Of course, they scream about politics, well, you know, politics was there before that it was even thought of.
We may make mention of that though, as far as politics is concerned.
We didn't have it.
Our country, no, our country, this town, our county, even joking, we could talk about this coming from the Freehold Board as well. There was, there was, I don't even remember that coming up in a discussion. Now, I was a Republican, you guys were all Ds.
Johnny was Republican.
Johnny was Republican. But that never, that never came into the discussion at all. I mean, this was about.
Good government.
Yeah, I mean, you know, let's go, we got to get this fixed, that, whatever, whatever it is, minor, whatever. But it was never a, hmm, how do my, you know, people, how are they going to react to this or whatever? I mean, it just never happened. It just wasn't there. I mean, even when we were running, it wasn't there, you know? And I don't know how, you know, I'm kind of removed now, so I don't know how the city part of it is done, but I know at the Freeholder level, it seems to be a lot more political even than, even than it was when I was there.
The last two years at that level was, sorry, was a very big challenge, I mean, from my own perspective.
And that's not the way local government should function.
It became political, the good government aspect of it kind of disappeared.
It should not be. When you get in there, that, you got to leave that label at the, at the doorstep.
Yeah.
And you got to get in there and do the work and, you know, unfortunately, you know, I guess, and it's not just here, I mean, it's not everywhere, you know?
It's just an attitude that's come up.
You try to make sure.
Promoting every level. Promoting every level.
You work with leadership from both political parties.
At the state level.
At the state level, it is so paramount.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, that's where you came in to play with us. Your connections in Detroit.
Well, you know, having people up there that recognize Millville, you know, as a very aggressive city, they want to do what is right with tax dollars, which is important, go after the state funds. And you show them the positive things that affect your community and you get people fighting for you up there.
Yep, yep.
You know, that's what it's all about. But, well, I agree, I agree with you. Now it's like, oh my gosh, if you're a D or this, or if you're Republican, you're that.
Can't ask. You don't want to go to, you don't want to, you know?
Yeah. And that's a shame.
At the local level. And that's why I thought it was, it was fun. You know, it was fun.
Well, it was, Jeff, because like you said, I mean, none of us knew what specific party we were. We didn't run as a team.
And we didn't, and we didn't, we weren't beholden to it. You know, I wasn't. I know you guys weren't.
I got reprimanded by, you know.
Oh, boy.
The Democratic Party at their top over the years, you had too.
Oh, yeah.
It's all about what's right for the people we represent. And that's.
I get my nose beat up sometimes because of politics, by one party or the other. But you know what you do? You do what you think is best for your city. And I think we all agreed on that. If it's a positive thing, that this is what we want to do, we do it. I don't, you know, so much about politics. You know, no, you know, we were focused.
Well, you think about that, the four years we were together, I don't remember one disagreement whatsoever that, that any of us had.
No.
We were there to help each other. I mean, that's why I say, we could have stayed the four years like.
We questioned each other. We questioned each other.
I had many conversations with him on the stairwell.
That's healthy. That's healthy. You're doing it.
Yeah. You guys wanted to know why we needed simulator in the, you know, to, you know, for training. I mean, it costs a lot of money. You should, you know, but, you know. So that happened, but we never, no, we never really.
And we never got personal.
No, we didn't.
Oh, boy. Yeah. Sometimes that ruins your, your commission. You know, when you have people up there fighting as commissioners with each other, calling each other names.
That ruins families. That ruins government. That ruins anything you possibly think of. And it's unfortunate.
You can have disagreements, but you don't get vindictive or, you know.
Yeah, Jim, you did a good job getting, you know, putting us in it, giving us some focus and direction of what your vision was for the city. And we all, you know, we all seem to have the same one, you know? And so it was easy to, you know, make decisions in that regard. So that's the, that's the importance of a leader, you know, to.
Build that consensus and keep people moving forward.
Exactly. And to be able to communicate that vision, not only your, your fellow commissioners, but to the administration, all the way down to the workers, and then eventually to, to the, to the people of Millville. Right? So they know where we, you know, what we're doing and why we're doing it. And, and what we, you know, and they might not always agree. They didn't agree. A lot of them didn't agree.
Not the first year. I can remember, I can remember one key, one key, key department leader telling me that you're here for four. I'm here for, you know, till retirement.
Yeah.
You're going too fast. You're doing too much. It's pretty interesting.
Into a really interesting thing for the two of you. Because when did you leave us to go to the Freeholder Board, Jeff?
That last.
Last year.
That last year, yeah. Yeah.
Last year I returned.
Now, I got to ask you, was it more fun being a Freeholder or was it better being with us in Millville City Commission?
I think I affected more people at this level.
Yeah, it is.
You feel, you feel like you get more done. You know what I mean? And then, than I did at the, at the, at the Freeholder level.
Well, I think he was director, so he got a lot.
For a long time. But you know what I'm saying, Joe? I mean, you know.
Jeff, I agree with you.
You know, it was my town, you know, you're parochial about it, you know, you love your town, you know. And then you get over there, you're dealing with, you know, an entire county.
Bunch bigger scoop.
And it's bigger and it's different, you know, and.
And the, and the problems and the issues and things are a little bit different. And then trying to work, and you know, you're trying to work with, you know, 14 other mayors, you know, as a board of county commissioners and try to, because everyone's got a different, different thought process.
The political parties are involved a little bit more.
And then politics comes in and we tried to keep that out. But you, you were right. The best, I said this, South Jersey County Commissioners, I was invited at as a guest just to stop down and enjoy their company again. And the best level of government is right here.
Yeah.
Local, whether it's school board, city, county, it's, we touch everybody's lives every single day.
You can make a difference. You can definitely make a difference.
You know, my favorite mayor of the city of Millville was Chet Goodwin.
Oh, yeah.
No offense, Jim, but Chet Goodwin was my favorite.
I just, yeah.
But what happened was, that son of a gun went. I was a Freeholder. He runs against me in 1991, and I lose, and he wins. So after he gets there, he goes, Jim, I wish I hadn't run. I liked Millville better. And, you know, it's what we've all talked about. And I was dumb enough, or whatever it ended up being, that I thought, gee, I'd like to finish my career in Millville, you know? So I didn't run with Joe. And had I run with Joe, I would have been part of the red wave anyway, because he was more popular than me. And, you know, when he loses, you know, it's the red wave.
Yeah, but you know, it's all about timing. It's just, you know, people want to change.
Exactly.
You've got to accept that.
No, and I do. And I mean, and the same in Millville. I technically won, but I lost. And I thought, no, I'm not going to go through what I went through in 2013 and 14, and what the staff had to go through because a couple of the people were going to be directly involved in this government. So I said, you know what? Give it to someone else. And they gave it to Bobby McQuade, who works hard and goes out, picks up TVs and things like that. And, you know, was on the school board.
He cares.
He does. Yeah, he really does. He's a good person.
I don't know.
Yeah. But, you know, it's the, it's, at least for them, it gives them people that are all growing in the same direction. You know, they're all doing their thing and certainly wish them.
Wish them the best. I hope they do a great job. I really do. If anything we can do, I mean, you know, don't be afraid to reach out. I'm not sure that'll happen. But, you know, of course, I'm.
Listen, I wish the best. It's our city.
Yeah.
Well, and I met Mayor, she's a very nice lady. And, yeah, I enjoyed talking with her. And.
And she's energetic?
She is. Yeah. She and Ben Romanek. There's another thing I wanted to talk about for a minute. When you think about this, when I got elected, you know, and I didn't know what to pick, just like you didn't know what to pick, Jeff. So I thought, well, sounds like a good department is recreation, public property and all that. So I take that. And then, of course, you took public safety. Jimmy was the vice mayor and Joe took.
I took whatever's left.
Yeah, right. And Johnny Hollingson took public. But what was, what was really, you know, funny, as you think about, you know, going into this situation, it's like, okay, I got, basically, I guess the best thing I could tell you I did with parks and public property was, I saw that we needed some good workers. And I went and I hired Donnie Vanaman and Larry Fawcett part-time in the seasonal for 10 bucks an hour. And they did a phenomenal job. But I guess my big point was, I wanted to make, think about this, in all the years, 40 years of the public property recreation department, it has been either the Romaneks or the Shannons, except for one term with me, one term with Bruce Cooper. So in 40 years.
Has Ben got the?
Ben's got the.
Ben does.
His grandfather was.
Is his grandfather?
Steve.
Oh, my. Well, I knew he was related. And I went to school with, I guess, his father.
Jimmy?
Jimmy.
Jimmy's his dad.
Yeah. And I played football with Jimmy, you know?
I coached Jimmy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Great guy, great people.
They are.
Fantastic family, no doubt, no doubt. Public service. I don't know, how old is Ben?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
That's great. Get some young blood in there.
He's got, right.
I mean that. I keep saying that we need some young people in there.
It's his time, yeah.
Yeah.
My blessing.
You know, I've always said to, to commissioners and people in government, and even at the state level, I did training sessions with newly elected officials, nobody's going to ever remember what you've done, what you've done in office, in a positive way. You know, whether it's building a building or what, you know, you can go by that, we had something to do about that as commissioners. People don't remember that. People don't remember a new building that you did, or something was controversial, or, or who knows who did what on the riverfront. Nobody remembers. We remember because we've been part of that, you know? And I always use that.
So what, what do they remember?
Well, they remember the bad things.
You touched on something though, because.
That's great.
We didn't, I think I can speak for others, that's not why we did it. We did it because we wanted to help.
That was fun.
We wanted to, we wanted to make a difference. Because listen, the city treated me great growing up.
Absolutely.
It gave me a lot of, a lot of lessons, a lot of support with people that I got to, you know, grow up with, with, you know, the parents and the people that were here that supported everybody.
Great school system, great, great recreational leagues and teams.
Yes.
A great, I mean, I can remember, the downtown had a special meaning for me. That's why I was so excited when we got on and we started talking about things we wanted to do down there. I remember shopping, Christmas shopping down there with my father in the snow.
Exactly. My dad was a high school.
Everybody knew everybody.
Everybody, walking down to the back with my mother in the, to the corner down Sarsfro Street, you know, eating lunch at the goody shop or worse, you know, during, when I was in elementary school, you leave the grounds for goodness sake. Yeah. Yep. And, you know, they, they're, times change, you know? And, and you look back and this nostalgic and it's, they were great times. But you're right, Joe. The city has been good to my family as well. And that was, you know, the reason you want to, you wanted, you want to give back.
Always wanted to give back still.
Oh, yeah, certainly. Look at my son. I mean, look what it's done to my, for my, my fam, I mean, my son. It takes a village. I really believe that. And, and he was raised by Millville people. And, and he's, you know, and, and all of our kids and everybody, you know, it's.
You ran it for the right reason.
Yeah.
You know, we're all there because we felt we're there for the right reason.
Certainly. And you're not, they're not there for, for the money.
No.
You know, or the, I don't, you know.
Another true story, the other, I got reelected and all this stuff, you know, I go shopping. I go grocery shopping.
You've never lost.
Never lost, no.
How many times?
Six. Nobody's, 25 years here as a commissioner. That's unheard of, serving, unheard of. But to such a point, I think just people keep bringing me back because I, I urinate them.
You'd have been a son of a gun. You let me down if you run in 13, and I'd have been able to have a teammate and play.
But, you know, it, it's just so many good things when you're there working, you have the support of your fellow commissioners and things that you try to do. You know, that's the key to it all. And it's a lot of work, a lot of aggravation. You go shopping, and this happened to me, you know, I'm at ShopRite, and I got my cart and doing the shopping. And two elderly ladies come up to me and say, aren't you Jim Parrott? I said, yeah, yeah, I'm Jim. Well, you, so be Democrats, raising taxes. You sit back and go, I'm trying to shop. So, you know, that happens.
It happens more than people think.
Joe and I did a show on TV, and it was the worst comments I had ever seen. You know, it's like, holy cow, no, no, you know, it's, but you know what, Joe.
I enjoy getting, not to interrupt, Jim, but I enjoy getting, getting feedback from kids I taught as well. I've seen years that are adults with kids, and now they're out in the workplace. And, you know, they, they coach, thanks a lot, whatever, you know, whatever. I gave them a pat on the back or gave them a higher grade than they deserved or whatever, you know?
It's called being fair.
Yeah, yeah.
You've touched so many lives. As a coach, a teacher, you're so fortunate. And I really mean it's bottom of my heart, you know, you never forget your teacher, you know, that we all had in school.
Especially the good ones.
You know, the, the, the kids that you coached will never forget you.
Look at a guy, like a guy like Tony Surrace.
Yeah.
The people, the generations really, because I always tell Mike, I'll give Mike a saying or whatever. And I said, that, that's not coming from me. That's, that's from Coach Surrace. He's heard more Coach Surrace comments than he's had my own, you know, so.
He, he and Al Codwell, when they had him.
Yeah, yeah.
He coached Codwell. They had the sayings.
And they, and they keep rolling over. And I'm sure he's going to do the same thing with Beckham. He's going to say the same thing about, you know?
Jake's got them all.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So is Casey.
Speaking of Beckham, how old is he now?
He'll be two, two, he'll be two in late July, 31st of July, I believe.
That's great. I love that. I love his initials.
Yeah, yeah. Stayed in the family. Yeah.
He was, he was.
My grandpop.
When he was younger.
That's right. Yeah, he was.
He would always, like down to my daughter's house, him and Brian are good buddies, as you know. You know, I mean, they go hunting and everything, so and all that.
And Brian goes Iowa with us. Yeah, yeah.
You know, but, you know, he's the same guy.
Yeah.
You know, they'd be down in the basement, hugging, playing ping pong.
And competing like heck, huh?
Killing each other. You think they're killing each other.
Brian's, Brian's the best to hunt with. He's.
Oh, my gosh. But they're just great moments. And he's, he's a quality young man.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, I mean that, you know, we're very fortunate to have him as an example.
Yeah.
The best.
From Millville. And that's.
Jeff, are you surprised how really, really great Mike is? I mean, you know, I remember people saying, well, he's going to be the next Mickey Mantle. I'm going, really?
As a player?
Yeah, as a player. But my God, he has. He is the GOAT. He is the greatest of all time.
You know.
And, and what we talked about before we went on the air, people, I was talking to Phillies today for the ticket things. And they said, boy, you know, everybody says, what a wonderful young man he is. I said, he is. He is the nicest person you'd ever want to meet. You'd never know he's a superstar.
Joe probably coached him more than I did because I, I, you know, we kind of, I had a thing. I coached Jake and he coached Mike, you know what I mean? So we, we stayed away from our own kids because they don't want to hear.
Well, I like your kid too.
Yeah. So, but no, yeah, you know, I don't know. I mean, just to be a successful big leaguer would have been fine with me.
Yeah, but you know.
Hey, listen, I always said one thing, you can do a lot of things. You got a lot of talent, whatever, but you can always outwork them. And I'll tell you, people don't realize how hard he works.
Yeah.
He's a talented kid.
Yeah, Brian says that.
Brian's probably, I don't know if Brian's ever worked out with him, but it's, it's just insane what he does in the off season. So.
Danny Richter.
You got to work, yep, yep. You know, you got to work.
Brian says Mikey is going to be in the best shape of his life.
Yeah, this year he is, and he is. He really, he really put the time in.
And it's only through hard work.
Yep.
My God, it takes him after his mommy.
He certainly does, in a lot of ways. Thank goodness.
Some of mommy's genes, taller. How tall is Mike?
Six toe boat.
Now, her brother, she's come from, she's got five brothers and they're all big, big football looking athletes, five, six, six one, six two, six three. So that's obviously, he didn't get it from me.
But you know, and I know, Mike could have been a superstar football player. He was a darn good basketball player. But I realized he don't want to play in football.
Nah, I'll coach, you know?
I know.
I had him in Mitchell League.
Yeah.
You know, his first year. He could run. Oh, my gosh, he was so quick. But he's did the right thing.
I know the real reason, Jimmy, I know the real reason why he's so good. Charlie Manuel told me. He did. This, I told Jeff, this was probably 10, before Mike was even in the picture, I was at a breakfast with Charlie as a season ticket holder. And I asked him if he remembered Jeff. I sure do. One of the best hitters I ever had. And he said that, you know, and then of course, Mike comes up. And then I saw him during the COVID period, because my seats were right in front of the Philly suite. And we got talking. He said, that Trout boy's doing good, isn't he?
He sure is.
I said, I, yeah, he really was. Nice man. But he thought the world of you. And, you know, it's wonderful to, to have that come forth.
When did, I got a question, not to change the subject, but when did, when did Timmy Shannon become mayor? When was that? Was that? When was that, was that?
Two thousand nine.
Yeah, two thousand.
I was there twelve years.
You were there twelve years?
Or Timmy was two thousand nine, Mike Santiago two thousand thirteen, and now, uh, for the first woman ever is Lisa.
Two brothers became mayor of the city.
Cause Mike got two terms, yeah.
Mike did two terms?
Yeah, he did, two thousand, thirteen and seventeen.
This was Mike's last term with me.
Timmy did one?
Timmy did one.
When he was mayor and then he decided to retire.
Didn't get out.
Yeah, I think he got.
Timmy was a good mayor.
Oh, he worked, let me tell you something, he worked hard.
Outstanding commissioner.
Yeah, he was.
He did his homework.
Yes, he did.
Oh, I'm serious.
And he was a great, like you, Jim, a great cheerleader for the town.
Yeah, he's super, well, Rob was too.
Yeah.
The whole Shannon family, that's much better, maybe, you know, Shannon's the parents of the Trout's.
Timmy, Timmy was, that's right, I remember him being mayor, yeah.
Wow. We'll be back with our twenty-fifth anniversary show of the year that Jim Parent, Jeff Trout, Joe Dorella and, and I were elected to the Millville City Commission and we'll be back with more right after these messages.
At Mintz Insurance, we're proud to have been serving our customers for nearly eighty years, offering thirty different insurance products for your auto, home and business. And to help ensure that you're getting the best rates possible, we give you up to three quotes for every policy, so you can choose what's right for you. At Mintz, we're part of the community, local representatives, supporting events and proud of it. It's part of who we are. Mintz Insurance, call today and find out how we can help you save on insurance or visit us at mintzinsurance.com.
I chose DeMarco Louisi Funeral Home because they treated me with respect and compassion. I couldn't have gone through all this if I didn't have DeMarco Louisi by my side. They did everything that they could to make me happy and that was important to me and my kids.
At the DeMarco Louisi Funeral Home, we're here for you and your family in your time of need.
I'm Brian Langton, third generation business owner, Al Shoes, been at the same location since nineteen sixty-one, our sixty-first year. We specialize in work boots, work shoes, orthopedic shoes, baby walking shoes and school shoes. We go up to a men's seventeen and a women's thirteen. It's five dollars off, twenty-five and ten off a hundred if you mention that you've seen this.
More than a century ago, General Tire was born, right here in America. Since then, we've made a name for ourselves by making tires you can depend on. Tires built to handle any road this country can travel and relied on by every kind of driver. So you know that no matter where life takes you, General Tire, anywhere is possible.
At Complete Care, we are patients serving patients. I choose to bring myself and my children to Complete Care because we are a one-stop-shop. We use dental, we use medical. I feel as though the quality of care here is great. I love working here. I feel great to work at a place that serves the community. There's a lot of people in need. To me, patients, serving patients means we've been in your shoes. We know what great care means to us and we wanna provide that for you.
Welcome back to Around South Jersey. This is the twenty-fifth anniversary show of when Jeff Trout, Joe Dorella, Jim Parent and me were elected to the Millville City Commission in nineteen ninety-seven. It was actually, the exact date was May thirteenth nineteen ninety-seven and Jim has the May fourteenth nineteen ninety-seven, uh, picture or the, uh, paper, the Daily Journal, where I look a lot heavier than I do today, so we don't wanna show that. Actually, thanks to Dr. T, I'm not obese as I used to be. But, you know, you guys, it's just, was interesting, as we talked about earlier, Jim, you had spent a lot of your years, many, many years, with the kids in the Mitchell Football League program. I mean, every, how many hundreds of kids you had to have coached?
I, I, I'm throwing a lot of things out in my home.
But you're a better man than all of them.
Uh, we've got, oh, by the way, Jim, um, I do have something for you, I'm gonna drop it off. My wife has over three hundred bells.
I know what you're gonna talk about.
True story, bells.
Ringing bells?
Bells, 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 bells.
That cowbell is scary, man.
That she bought from Jim Quinn with auction time at night, she'd stay up half the night getting bells from him. We, she has, Jim, I swear to you, over three hundred bells, all locked up because they're, they're in totes and I'm gonna drop them off at your house.
Okay, well, you could bring them here, cause we're gonna start auction time up again.
Okay, well, I got a couple of bells, I'll, I'll donate them to you, you want them, I'll give them to you.
All right, I'll say this is in honor of Jim and Carol, Jim and Carol, ring the bell.
Why, 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 give me the story there.
She was the bell lady.
Yeah, she was.
She started, uh, in Foot Mitchell League, you, you mentioned that.
Yeah.
When I started, and I didn't, I didn't remember when I started, so I'm going through all my plaques and trophies, I'm throwing a lot of stuff out in the house, uh, for my, uh, totes. I started in nineteen sixty-four coaching, in nineteen sixty-four. John Rubart asked me to coach.
Wow.
Nineteen sixty-four.
You just graduated high school.
Yeah, right out, yeah. Uh, because in nineteen seventy-four, I got this plaque for ten years of service.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
Wow.
In nineteen seventy-four, so I started, so nineteen sixty-four coaching kids.
Yeah.
For thirty-some years, for almost forty years. So I think that's one of the reasons I got elected because, you know.
Yeah.
And, and it's crazy because when my son got back from college and has residency here, he got back, he got back into coaching, yeah, which was great. He's a good, he's a good, good kid, good one to coach them, so I'm, I'm helping him now.
Right.
So, this one little boy comes up to me and he said, Coach Parent? I said, yes. He says, my pop-up said you coached him. That answers your question, okay? My pop-up said you coached him, I'm out, I told myself, I'm out of here, that's it.
You started coaching in nineteen sixty-four?
Nineteen sixty-four, yeah.
Yeah, I actually started coaching Little League in nineteen sixty-four for Carpanis, I was like.
Tells you how many years I, I went into coaching youth, you know, football, baseball.
You saw me come through in the Mitchell League.
Oh, gosh, yeah, yeah, we couldn't beat you guys, you're tough, man.
You know, we, you hear stories, this is true. I was, I was in Chicago this weekend watching Mike and I was with my buddy Brian.
Played on my All-Star game, I know that.
My buddy Brian Lewis was, and his wife were out there with Deb and I. And, um, we had a team, the Eagles, the coaches were, the head coach was.
Baseball, yeah.
No, 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 this was the Eagles, the, yeah, the Eagles, I think it was the Eagles, the football team, the red, yeah, we were the, we were the Eagles, right?
I just remember the Eagles from Little League.
What was our team's name? I don't, I don't.
That was.
Dale Finch was the head coach. Don Ayers was assistant coach, Don Hedley.
What year was that?
Jack Harris.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I had to be twelve, so it was, um, we were undefeated and unscored upon, do you remember that? We were undefeated, we were in Sports Illustrated.
Yeah.
Like in a little blurb, you know, like a little blurb at the end.
Pieces in the crown, right?
Yeah, yeah.
See, back then, we were Pop Warner.
Yeah, Pop Warner, we were the Eagles, yeah, Dale Finch.
We affiliated with Pop Warner, okay?
Right, right, right.
And Pop Warner Organization set up our poll games where we would travel and play a team somewhere, that all went through the organization, you know, whether it was in Chi-Lai, up in Massachusetts, Virginia, Pittsburgh.
I remember traveling.
Okay, I mean.
George Cardy and all those guys, yep, yep.
We always had a good reputation with the Pop Warner official people.
Yeah.
You know, setting things up, so yeah, it, you know.
Yeah.
It's in the record book somewhere, Jeff, you know.
Can you imagine going undefeated and unscored upon an entire season?
Wow, holy cow, that's unbelievable.
Yes, Dale.
Yeah, Dale's.
Dale Finch.
Yeah, he and I talk a lot, so he has told me about that, yes.
Yeah.
I remember mentioning.
What a crew that, look at our coaching staff, Dale Finch, Don Hedley, Jack Harris, Don Ayers, uh, who else was on that staff? But, um, yeah, me, Charlie Sights, Brian Lewis, Kent Taylor, uh, I can remember it like it was yesterday, it was some good times.
I would've had that somewhere, but I lost all that stuff in my basement when we had the flood. I have all the, all the teams back when we coached and you guys.
That all got ruined, but the bells survived.
The bells, bells, man.
They were up in the loft upstairs. Yeah, I lost all those things.
Yeah, there were the Eagles, the Jets, the Raiders, the Colts, right? They were the four teams down there.
The four teams.
Yeah, yeah.
The, speaking of the sports factor, this was interesting for us while we were in city commission, we were able, I went, actually, I had a convertible and I just threw a bag in the back of the car and I drove down to Kill Devil Hills, North Carolina for the Girls' World Series, they were playing the World Series. So, I got a room and then I started schmoozing with the people from Babe Ruth, you know, the people that were the officials.
Right, right.
We had dinner together and I talked them into having the two thousand Babe Ruth World Series girls here.
Yeah, that was fun.
For sports, you know what I mean, wasn't that great to be able to host that and, you know, be able to, at those, I mean, that's sort of part of what Millville's about, we're back to Rob Shannon, geez, it must've been the early seventies that Rob started that softball tournament, he raised hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yes, he had. The fiftieth anniversary this past year, wasn't it?
Yes, exactly, so, um, I actually tried to do that too for a while, I ran a sixty-four team tournament in Vineland to raise money for Cumberland County College Sports Program. And what was interesting was the people said to me from outside the area, Millville and Vineland is phenomenal because you have land, you have beautiful fields, you know, you have plenty of land here where, you know, some colonies, what some of those small towns had heights and all that, they're border to border, there's really not.
Yeah.
Acres. Millville is six, forty-five square miles, Vineland's sixty-nine.
Forty-four square mile footprint and, and we're about the size of Disney's footprint.
That's right, yep.
And, and Vineland's about the size of Los Angeles's city.
That amazing, sixty-nine square miles.
Footprint.
They're huge, it's huge.
It's huge. People don't realize that.
And we have, we have some great kids playing sports and, and we got these beautiful write-ups before with newspaper articles, we don't have a newspaper in Cumberland.
I know.
You know, it's a shame.
You do miss that a little bit, you know.
You know, there's no local flavor.
It'd be great to be a politician now because you never, you know, you know, you're not getting blasted in the paper like we used to.
You're on Facebook, you're on Facebook.
Yeah, well, that's right.
You're getting, you're getting hit by people outside the county, I mean, there were times when we had a conference issue, people were calling, hitting you up on Facebook, doing the stuff, that lived in North Jersey, lived in New York.
Yeah.
It was North Carolina.
I bet, I bet. So you reach, you gotta further reach with it.
Yeah, you can reach further out, you know, and get yelled at by more people, even with accents too.
Coach Surrace is doing a lot right now locally on Facebook, uh, that was, uh.
Posting, posting a lot of stuff on Facebook.
Yeah, posting a lot about our local athletes.
College kids.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But it's still not the same.
Yeah, I'm an old school guy, I gotta have a paper.
You gotta have a paper, you gotta have pictures.
I got it, I know, I know, you know, we.
Tony Surrace is our guy that's making sure that our, our young folks, boys and girls, are getting some kind of recognition, they're doing well in college.
Ah, we do, we do.
You know, they're, they're, they're doing well as students and nobody knows about it.
Yeah, and I, I can tell you this, and I, and every time I spoke in public recently, I, I, if, not much, but if I've been asked to, I always bring this up, you know, people complain about the schools, this, that and the other, you know, some of the successful people that we've come, that have come out of our high school, our school system, not just, not just.
There's four, I'm sitting right here, Jeff.
Not just athletic talent, I'm talking musicians and doctors and scientists and.
Entertainers.
And entertainers and just, you know, I mean, really, I mean, so, uh, you know, this, this town's been successful with, uh, you know, uh.
And, and it's a shame because, you know.
You don't read much about it, you don't see.
And we don't read much about our academics that, that's here.
Yeah.
You know, their teachers and, and, and the progress that the Board of Education's doing with the, the administration, our kids are getting quality education here, you know, they're getting prepared for college, they're, you know, they're moving on and being successful and.
If you want it, if you want a good education, you can get it.
You got it, you, you got it.
Well, and you know, it's wonderful, speaking of good education, our state championship football team, over half of those kids were on the honor roll.
Yeah.
That's, that's quite a tribute to all of them and, and, and again, I, I guess we.
That's outstanding, that's good.
I guess everybody knows, we certainly wanna thank Dennis Thomas for his seven years of dedication to the Millville Football Program, uh, Dennis is moving on to Rutgers and, uh, they'll be hiring.
Is that an assistant coach? Is he getting, he's an assistant there?
It's a, yeah, it's.
Kinda have the feeling he might move on, you know.
Yeah, people talked about that.
He's a, he's a, he's a, he's a, he's got a lot, he's got a future in, in coaching and he might, you know.
Well.
Boy, it's such a tough business though to be.
Coaching is hard.
Yeah, it, it, at the collegiate level to get the head coaching job, you gotta really, really, really pay your dues.
Yeah.
I don't know how old Dennis is or whatever, but he's, you know, and that's, that looks like the direction he's going in and good luck to him.
Yeah, Coach Thomas was doing the thing that Tony Surrace did, education, make sure kids get their homework, make sure kids are attending in class and you as coaches, working teachers out there, you know that, you know, making sure that your athlete is getting in the classroom, go to college, you know, do something.
Exactly.
And, and, uh, you know, that's.
And he's got some kids playing, playing at the next level now.
Sure does.
And, and he's gonna have, well, not, he won't, but there's some kids on that, in that program.
Unbelievable, isn't it, Jeff?
That are incredible, incredible talents.
Jeff, I.
I loved watching them play, I thought that Laquinton Allen, he was one of the best football players I ever seen play, play at Millville, he, both sides of the ball, what a football player that kid was and, and.
I go to the Mitchell League games, well, I try to go watch these kids play still.
Yeah, that's a great. Jeff Mills is doing a great job with the Mitchell League now.
Yes, he is.
And I said, wait till you get this group of kids to come in now. And boy, and there's a, a group of them down there now that, they're super athletes.
Yeah.
And the thing I love right now is the way that the coaches just aren't coaching the X's and O's even at that level, they're talking about church, school, responsibilities. I mean, I listen to them and, and as you guys know, as teachers and coaches.
That football program's really, they're really, whatever, I don't know what, they're doing a really good job down there, they really are and.
Head off to them, you know.
It looks, it looks, uh, the future looks bright.
Boy, does it, I mean, where would you ever think, under we're getting into football, we're getting athletics and, and school.
But that's part of Millville, that's.
Where would you, where would you ever think that you had four freshmen starting, you went to the state championship?
Isn't that amazing, yeah.
Where? When you have two freshmen playing tackle.
Yeah, and they're big boys.
Yeah, yeah.
And Lance Seer Brooks is unbelievable.
You're always coaches, you know that.
He's really a special athlete.
He is, oh my goodness.
He really is and, uh.
It's unreal, wow.
Uh, it's gonna be fun to watch in the next couple of years, he's already getting office from UCLA and from what I hear from some, some big schools. But I was impressed with their offensive line.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, two freshmen.
Yeah, as an old offensive line coach, I'm telling you what, they, uh, they, they knock you back, so, yeah, it was fun to, fun to watch them the last couple of years and we'll see what happens.
While we have an opportunity, I do wanna mention that I talked to the Phillies today and I put together a suite package for people that have money that wanted to come to the suite and that's fine and I, I've got my number, I take some more if somebody wanted to, what's to come, but what I'd like to do is I'd like to promote the tickets that most people can afford, they're available at the Leeway Theater and, what was it, seven years ago when he was here before, Jeff?
I have no idea, maybe, I, I don't know.
When we put together, I was still in city commission, we put together Millville Night. Anyway, the great part about what the Phillies do is they will give eight dollars for every ticket that's sold back to the Millville Development Corporation and the Leeway Theater. They're both nonprofits and the last time when we ran it, we sold over five thousand tickets because of Mike. So those, right now, we don't even have a thousand tickets sold, the Phillies called me today, they said, Jim, you gotta start promoting the other tickets, not the ones[1485.57] the other tickets, not the ones you're selling. I said, okay, I'm knocking out the ones. And my, by the way, the ones I'm selling, the money there goes to the Cumberland County, our complete care of Cumberland County. That's where the, uh, money that's raised from that does go to. But please folks, these seats are super. They're between first base and third base. If you went last time, you know they're the upper deck, they're between first and third. You'll be able to see Mike up in bat and you'll be able to give him a standing ovation. And Dan Baker and I are very good friends. We've become friends over the last 10 years because his booth's close to where my seats are. And he told me never, ever in the history of Citizens Bank Park has a visiting player gotten the ovation that Mike Trout got. He said, Jim, I couldn't believe it. And he had to tell me, the funny part is normally Dan is down on the field, does the announcing and then someone in the booth does the first, top of the first inning. So it gives him time to get from the field up there. He said, man, I was tearing my backside. I wanted to get up there. I'm announcing Mike Trout. And he did. And he still talks about what a great experience it is, what a great experience it was. We have MLB to Millville that we actually show occasionally if you'd like to catch that as well. But folks, our own Mike Trout's going to be at Citizens Bank Park, June 3rd, 4th and 5th. The 3rd is at 7:05, the 4th is at 7:05. I think that's a nationally televised game also. And then the 5th is 1:35. So there's, if, the best thing if you can do is go through the Levoi. 327-6400, 856-327-6400. Call up, ask for Amanda and she will put aside as many tickets as you want. I'm not positive on the price, 25, $30, something like that, but very reasonable compared to my price in the suite of $200. So you could buy six tickets for the price of what you have to do to come into the suite. But please do that. Support the Levoi, support the Millville Development Corporation and be supportive of Millville's greatest athlete ever and the greatest athlete, baseball player in America is from Millville. You've got to be proud of that. And one of the nicest young men you'll ever meet in his life and his dad's a pretty good guy and his mom's a sweetheart and his brother Tyler and his sister Teal are sweet, great people. They really are. In fact, Jeff, I don't remember the time we were out to that Italian restaurant on Main Street near Rite Aid, Rite Aid that closed and you had the family and I don't know what year it was, but I thought Tyler was, was, uh, Mike and Mike was Tyler. That's when Mike hit, no, but Mike hit that growth spurt. And Mike got taller. He goes, no, this is Mike now too. I don't know what year that was.
Yeah. Yeah, he did. He grew about five inches between his, his, uh, his freshman and sophomore year. So he really hit a growth spurt. But while you're at the Levoi picking up tickets, check out the upcoming events there because I got to tell you.
Yeah, super shows.
That place is unbelievable. They have some tremendous shows and concerts, tribute bands, musicals, comedians. I mean, they do a great job. It's just a fantastic, uh, you know, thing for the town and you're never disappointed when you get out. It's, it's reasonable. It's a great night out.
Lone Star just sold out completely.
I bet.
And that, the guy, Joe, anybody, uh, I saw him out the sidelines. The fellow that opened for Lone Star, he's Millville guy.
Oh yeah, I saw that where, where he, uh, yeah, where he opened up. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, I saw him at sidelines. He was very good. He was thrilled to open. I asked Phil, Phil said it was sold out, Jim. Every seat was sold out. And, and again, coming back to us, you'd probably gone to the freeholder board, but in, at the time, we had been moving, Jim, Joe, working on how can we help the Levoi?
We were having nostalgic conversations about the Levoi when I was there.
Yeah.
About what can we do with this?
Yeah. I thought Joey Pierce was crazy when he told you what he wanted to do.
This, this, this property that's been, that's, that's touched so many people.
It, it brings people into our town.
Yes, it does.
You know, uh, yeah, we need to look a couple more restaurants, I think.
It's, it's great. I mean, I know P, yeah, we do.
You know, it's, it's a great night out at a reasonable cost and, and it's brought thousands and thousands of people into our, our community. Yeah.
And I got to tell you, another place that's brought thousands of people into our community that probably didn't help me get reelected sometime is the New Jersey Motorsports. I mean, they bring 600,000 people to Cumberland County in a year.
And post, uh, excuse me, before, uh, COVID, that last year was over 800,000.
Was it really, Joe? One thing I went to was phenomenal about.
Did COVID affect that, Joe? The, uh?
It did. They'd shut down. There's a lot of things. We worked with them directly from a county perspective to get them back open.
How are they doing?
They're back on track. They're back. No dump unintended. Yeah, they're back moving. But you know, there, there's a lot, a lot of venues out there. Field of Dreams seems to do pretty, pretty well. So again, they lost the one major race card, but they made it up with.
The motorcycle.
Motorcycle thing is a big deal. So, but out there, you know, try to get there three or four times a year just because it's interesting.
It's neat.
Outdoor thing is just really neat.
It's folks different. Got to tell you.
People are, so a lot of people don't realize it, that, that live in the county that still don't realize that, that that's there or that, uh, maybe have not been in the Levoi yet, you know? It's, 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 when you walk in there, it's just like you're not in Millville really. It's kind of, you know, it's like, you know, it's, it's cool. So.
The amazing Cresskin said just about what you just said. He goes, honest to God, I've traveled and I've performed all over the world. No place is, is better than the Levoi. This is amazing place.
Yeah, it is. It's neat.
Tribute when you get it from the world.
Absolutely.
The other thing I wanted to mention to all of you too, you know, truthfully, Millville's restaurants, because of Andrea's leaving and Winfield's not opening, were down to not a whole lot of restaurants that, you know, you want to go to sometimes. I mean, uh, what I want to say is the motorsports park food is fabulous. They have Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. The, um, the clubhouse, uh, when you go in.
Finish Line.
Finish Line Pub. Thank you, Joe. When you go in, you just tell the people you're going to go eat at the Finish Line Pub. You'll make a right and you get down. It's on your left. What they've done for Cumberland County residents, all you have to do is go in, you get a 10% discount, half price, uh, drinks, certain ones, they have posted half price. And then they have a main meal, like we'll say chicken and pasta and vegetables or something for $16 and includes soup or salad and cheesecake for dessert, 16 bucks. This is on Thursday nights, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It's a great place. The food is very, very good. And Tony, the chef, does a phenomenal job and I go out there a lot. Healthy food, salads, very reasonable prices. And if you go to the Chamber Luncheons, you'll know how good they were. Joe, you and I were at the event for the 1975 class.
Correct. South Jersey Hall of Fame.
South Jersey Hall of Fame. And, you know, that was, they really did. They do a nice job. So that's the extra special thing that we do get from there. But, but you're right. I mean, the Levoi, I know the Levoi's functioning when I come downtown in our cars. It's like, yes, Levoi's open.
I'd like to see a couple of restaurants down there.
And it's still, you know, and I gotta, I gotta, I gotta say this too, you know? It's a safe district downtown. I mean, I, I hear so many negative things about downtown Millville is not safe. You know, um, I don't know anybody.
I don't walk, when I, when I, when I, when I come down here with my wife, I get to the Levoi, I never feel unsafe, you know? It's not like we're, you know?
We bring thousands of people into the Levoi Theater for shows. I don't, I can't think of anybody getting robbed, beat up, car broken into.
It's kind of a.
You know, it, it's kind of like, you know, but people have that image.
Yeah.
You know, and, and it, you know, you just kind of be more positive, that's all. You know, we are what we are and we work with what we have. And, and sooner you do that, and don't forget to keep investing in infrastructure, the city will be fine.
Well, you know what?
That's what we need to do.
Speaking of infrastructure, I will say to we, if you look at the ratable base, when we got elected in 1997, it was about 670 billion, 670 million dollars. When 2009, when I finished my term, Jim, you were still with us, Joe, you were still there. We were able, because of people like Don Ayers, Kim Ayers, it wasn't just us, it was the team. John, you know, John Doob, everybody else worked together and we were able to bring in the Millville Town Center, which has Chili's and the Longhorn, has the auto parts place there.
United Crossing.
And, and that town center first and Union Lake Crossing, which was a big, big 80, 80 some million dollar ratable. And yet you had the negative people saying, don't give that Target an abatement or pilot. You know what? If we hadn't give Target a pilot, we wouldn't have the place. That would be zero there, no jobs.
And you're competing with other, you're competing with other municipalities that are doing the same thing you're doing.
Giving them all the pilots they want.
Oh my goodness, you know, so I mean.
That pilot paid more than, almost as much as the other three businesses that ended up closing in taxes, just the pilot from, from Target.
Yeah.
And then fill in the rest. People forget that, that the land tax stays the same. It's only the improvements that are being done that gets the pilot. It only ran for five years and, you know, there's a lot of, it's a misunderstanding, you know, how that really worked for Target.
Target it was, yeah.
Joe, if you know, you know, revenue and finance and all, you know, you need those types of rateables coming in, you know? And, and you know that, uh, you have to invest sometimes some money in order to bring money in.
You got to invest it to grow.
You know, to, to sit up there and know in your hearts, you know? Look, we're doing the right thing. We're doing the right thing. And, and that's what I loved about you guys. You know, you, you did the right thing and that there's controversy that goes along with it, but still.
Uh, we got, yeah, you, yeah. I mean, I remember getting hammered. Mike up, up there when, when, when we, given, uh, uh, the, the incentives that, that we gave to, to people that to come in here and, and start. It's, that's paying off now, but you know? Well, they didn't want to hear it, did they?
Again, it paid more, just like motorsports. I know there's a lot of criticism, a lot of difference, but all that 700 acres only paid $10,000 a year in taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, just their pilot, just their pilot paid 15 times, no, more than that.
You know, let me tell you.
Over a hundred times more than that. Joe was 170.
An interesting thing with the motorsports park is their pilot is running out, I think next year. But to their credit, they brought in all these exotic car garages that are a couple hundred thousand dollars each. And they had the condos and everything that they built. I believe now their ratables are about 50.
They, they were never going to be unless the deal.
No, exactly. No, they were not.
They were all fully taxed.
That's what I'm saying, Joe. Exactly. Yeah. Now that was my point. So they're now bringing in no, no rate, no abatements, no nothing, just a hundred percent taxable. And I believe it's at like 50 some million, 60 million dollars in ratables that are taxable to the city immediately. Like Joe said, it wasn't.
Just took time.
It did. And they're continuing and they've been selling them like crazy. They got a Millville fellow that builds them and does a great job with them. And they just, they're still building another group. Every time they just about get done, they resell the next seven. So, you know, it's wonderful. And these people come from all over the East Coast, you know, I.
All over the, all over the country.
Exactly. Yeah. It's, it's been fabulous. So we have with the Levoi, a great draw and with the motorsports park, an international draw. Yeah. Uh, Michael Jordan's been there, McDreamy, Patrick Dempsey's been there. I mean, we've had a lot of celebrities. One of my friends, she was.
My wife had the picture of she and her on the refrigerator for years.
That's why she's still.
I remember when Patrick Dempsey came was a big.
Well, that's it. That's it too. Yeah. It was a big deal.
Yeah. It's the same old story when you're in government, you know, uh, we're only there for a short period of time, some.
Except for you.
You know, I just love the aggravation. I guess, I don't know. But, you know, you can walk out knowing you've tried to do something positive for your community. And, you know, the four sitting up here have done some positive things for our community. You know, that's the bottom line. Um, and, and the hardest thing is when you lose people because they're still trying to do the right thing. Their intentions are always good and they don't get reelected for whatever reason that's out there. And we lose some good people, you know, along the way.
Oh Jimmy, that reminds me, you lied to me.
What?
I gotta tell, I'm telling everybody, Jimmy lied to me.
Okay, well, I'll talk.
Speaking of elections, no, no, this is true. You, you were very nice about it. And I, I always say the ones are not my ears. And this was 2021. It wasn't my ear either. In 1981, I lost the election for freeholder. Mike was a rookie. And 19, in 1988, 1985, I win. This man says to me, Jim, you won the Kane landslide. You'll never have to worry about losing again. Six years later, I got my backside booted out when we had the Jim Florio backlash. But Jimmy, who could have seen that coming?
Well, you know, oh, but you know, Florio backlash, but you know, Florio did the right thing.
Yeah.
And that's the point I was getting at. You know, I mean, uh, he had to, he got hit bad.
But I appreciated your comments, your compliment in, in 85 was only Ed Salmon and I were the only two Democrats. I think that one county or statewide almost is freeholders. So Jim said, based on that, you shouldn't have any troubles in, in the future. But again, you don't know.
No, you don't know.
Who would have thought Joe Dorella is one of the best elected officials I've ever served with in my life gets blown away in a, uh, red wave when he's done all these great things in that period of time. But, you know, it's time.
Yeah, that's the point, that's the point that I was, I was making, you know, that, you know, you work so hard and you're so effective that people really don't realize that. And you're dedicated and, and you give so much of your personal time out there, even though, you know, like the official, we all met, we get, yeah, we all made a lot, a lot of money doing it, you know? That's what I like to hear. I don't know where it's at. But, you know, and, and you wind up losing, you know? And, and, and you, why? It's just, that's, that's politics. The bottom line is, that's politics. And, and always remember, when you're elected, you know, if you keep on running, sooner or later you're going to get beat.
Correct.
You know, I mean, something happens, you know, that, that just turns the tide.
You get criticized and people will find ways, but you know what, I always said, I will continue to say, I'd rather be criticized for doing something.
Joe, as a freeholder director, and I mean this, you know?
It's easy to criticize.
You promoted the county, you promoted the city and you're a great spokesperson out there. And I mean that. You know, I mean, we're friends and all, but I call it like it is. And I, I'd sit there and listen to you. I'm all going proud, Joe.
Yes, I am.
I mean, that's how I.
Tremendous public servant. No question about it. Without a doubt.
You're there for a reason.
Honest.
To try to do something positive and you get beat.
Did your homework always?
You know, he lied to me too. He didn't lie. He didn't.
Never lies. Never lies.
He didn't tell me the truth though, because I was mayor for 12 years, right? And then Timmy gets the mayor's position and then I become vice mayor a little bit later on when he leaves. And he never told me the vice mayor's job was twice as hard as a mayor's job.
Yes, it is.
Hey Joe, let me get out of here. I want to be freeholder again.
I, I, I said this to Joe, my last term, I said, Joe, I'm not taking any more revenue and finance, being a vice mayor. I don't care where I finish. Please, you know, take that. I'm going to be, I'm not going to be running anymore. And I thought it was a good learning experience and, and, and to do that. And you find out, well, you know something? You are the busiest commissioner sitting up there.
That's true.
I mean, handling all those departments that we handle, you know, within city hall, every day, there's a problem.
Correct.
Right? I mean, you know what that's like. I, I dealt it for a number of years. My day always would start calling the city administrator, administrator, what's your problem of the day? You know, because that's what it is.
Well, well, government, especially local government, it's, it's a people business. You're dealing with hundreds of workers and people all the time. If you're not dealing, dealing with the citizenry, you're dealing with the people that work beneath you, you know? And for you and for Millville. And now, not everybody's perfect and mistakes are going to be made. And you're going to need to put out, you know, fires all the time, all the time, you know? And I found a lot of that, yeah, a lot of it dealt with, 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 with the workers, you know?
Personal problems.
Personal, yeah. I mean, the worst job government is, is being, uh, you know, uh.
City administrator.
Personnel director.
That you handle. But that, that's what we are faced with, that the general public really doesn't see, Joe. You know, day in and day out.
Did you have 900 employ, we have, we have 900 employees, the county?
County at one point had close to 1,400.
Yeah.
And then cut back and it's around 1,100 now.
Where we're at, City of Millville now.
And that's the right.
Well, you're talking about hundreds of people.
The, the best job that happened to be labor council for, for the municipality or for a county.
You always got work.
You always got work because there's always a problem that labor, most of the time that labor council has to be notified and they come in. And if you call them, the clock runs.
And there's always a contract that's got to be settled.
There's always a grievance in it.
There's always a grievance.
But that, that all comes with, you know, the responsibility and that, you learn.
We, we were fortunate, Joe, to having somebody like Rich McCarthy as our attorney.
Dedicated himself to the city.
I just don't want to forget that. Uh, boy, he ate, slept, drank Millville all the way, all the way, all the way. The best thing that we ever did back then, like there, is to bring him in. He was the right person at the right time. Um, you know, truly, uh, he loved the city. You know, he truly loved the city.
He still does. He's a historian, he's a local historian. If I have a question about the city or about the glass factory.
Glass industry.
He's writing a book about it now. But he's, you know, last time I went into the Historical Society, he was in there researching. I went in there to look at sports thing, you know? But, uh, he was in there, you know? And, uh, uh, he's, he's, he's been writing this book for quite a long time, but at some point it's going to be published, I guess. And, uh, he's constantly researching and he knows more about the glass industry and the beginning of the glass industry and the people involved and, um, the players that we don't even know, you know, most people don't know about and how it happened and some of the ins and outs and, and.
Paperweights and how it developed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're trying to.
And the little scandals involved. He knows a lot about it. He really does.
Trying to bring in McCarthy in the political world out there at the time. Um, Bill Farce became a Superior Court Judge.
That's right. Yes.
Bill was fine.
Super guy. Another great athlete too.
Great player, great pitcher. Yes, he was.
An outstanding Superior Court Judge, by the way, because I had to appear before him on occasions with election, election things that was happening. Most of law, Superior Court Judge, Bill was fantastic. Now we had to hire a city minister, uh, city clerk, uh, city, uh.
Solicitor.
Solicitor. And it was always every Republican. Gee, if that's something, it was always a Republican for some reason. But we, we had to work out something because Lou Thompson will probably tell you, the one that somebody wanted who was, happened to be a Republican, I knew that there was a Republican sitting there as a commissioner who not, would not support him. And I wanted to get McCarthy on because I felt he was the best.
I never knew Rich, I didn't even know what Rich was.
Yeah, I know.
No, he, he was.
He wasn't, he wasn't political.
No, he wasn't. No, that's the point that I was getting at.
That's why he was so good.
Yeah.
He could have cared less about political. I don't even know if he's registered R D or independent.
What happened when Ed Salmon ran in a primary race, I'll tell you how it happened, against John Rose. Hey, you guys don't remember these things?
Well, I'm only certain age. I mean.
All right. I've been there a long time. And.
I remember John Rose.
Yeah. Well, Ed ran against John for freeholder in a primary race. McCarthy filed, voted for, uh, changed the party affiliation. I didn't even have it. He was undeclared.
Yeah.
But he voted for, you know, you know, Ed Salmon and people like that. Uh, and that's the only reason, you know, that, and he.
Yeah, they always just said he was an Ed Salmon Democrat, not a, not a full party Democrat.
No, you know, he, he wasn't a politician. He wasn't politically influential.
You know what though, Jimmy? I do want to give credit to Larry Pepper. Talk about Republicans. He did a super job as our labor attorney and we always went with him. We knew that was the best person to be there. He really is. Steve Nieder was our judge. He was Republican. I mean, we didn't play politics, you know, that way.
Even when we were making our appointments, when we were making our appointments, it never came up to me. I mean, nobody said.
He was the right, he was the right one with labor council.
It just didn't. I mean, I, I just, you know, I just wasn't in that world yet, you know, and, uh.
He was the county chairman for 25 years for the Republican Party.
Larry?
Yes.
Oh, I know Larry was. Yeah, I mean, Larry, good friends with Larry. Yeah, yeah, right.
So when people think that that's the only way avenue.
Well, I don't know if that happened today, would it?
Well, you know, I would still, I still vote for the right person.
If I were there, I would have voted for Larry because he had.
I mean, in today's, in today's climate though, just those kinds of things.
In fact, in the previous administration, I tried to work with Larry Pepper back.
Get our guy in there. We got to get our guy in there.
Well, the problem, yes, I understand.
And I'm sure they're all qualified, but you know, I mean, I didn't do a thing without talking to Rich.
No.
Who were one of you guys? I mean, I was young, you know? But I mean, I didn't make a move in the police department without first talking to the solicitor and say, hey, is this?
McCarthy every day.
Is this, yeah, is this, is this legal? Is this, is this in, in the ordinance? Can we do this? Can we, you know? And, uh, you know.
Have you ever seen him in court? Have you ever seen McCarthy in Superior Court?
No, not Superior Court. I, I saw him, I saw him in front of.
We did. You could hear him down the hall.
Yeah. He's boisterous.
Oh, loud, loquacious human being.
But boy, he was a Millville guy.
Oh, yeah.
He a Millville guy.
Speaking of Millville guys, Carlos Matheson said that he remembers you, Joe, as a child. Jim as a coach and me on radio. And he wants to know who the handsome guy is sitting next to Jim. That's Mike Trout's dad. It's Jeff Trout.
That's who I'm known as now. Not Jeff Trout. Mike's dad, who's Debbie's husband.
That's his husband, Mike's dad. And, and Bat's grandpa.
Bat's grandpa. That's right.
Beckham's grandpa.
Beckham's grand, Beckham's grandpop and Bat's grandson because my grandfather was nicknamed Bat.
That's right. I do remember.
Big lefty could hit, you know?
Were you lefty too?
I was a switch hitter.
I can remember Joe, uh, what Joe, gosh, with, with your father.
Nelson.
Yeah.
You were good friends.
Yeah. God, were we. We would.
I know. I saw yous a few times together.
Absolutely. We would, uh, we would stop for an adult beverage, uh, in Ithos.
Yeah.
And to go watch Jeff Trout play baseball at Delaware.
Yeah.
And it was a six-pack of adult leverage or something over, and a six-pack coming back.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I remember that.
Well, we're going to take a break, then come back with more of the program, but I do want to mention that Freeholder Joe Soleo said, whenever you do the right thing, party doesn't matter, I wish today's world operated that way, understood what you said, Joe.
Amen.
Good point, and Carlos comes back, Carlo came back with, I remember Trout was a young man, when he was delivering you the paper, the Millville Daily, the News, anyway, we'll be back with the team here from 25 years ago, Joe Durella, Jeff Trout, Jim Parent, and yours truly, Jim Quinn. We were elected by the people of the city of Millville to be your city commissioners, along with John Hollingshead, who we want to talk about when he come back again a little bit, about what a great, great guy he was, and who replaced him as well, she's a sweetheart. We'll be back with more in just a minute.
At Complete Care, we are patients serving patients. I choose to bring myself and my children to Complete Care, because we are a one-stop shop. We use dental, we use medical, I feel as though the quality of care here is great. I love working here. I feel great to work at a place that serves the community, there's a lot of people in need. To me, patients serving patients means we've been in your shoes. We know what great care means to us, and we want to provide that for you.
At Mintz Insurance, we're proud to have been serving our customers for nearly 80 years, offering 30 different insurance products for your auto, home, and business. And to help ensure that you're getting the best rates possible, we give you up to three quotes for every policy, so you can choose what's right for you. At Mintz, we're part of the community, local representatives, supporting events, and proud of it. It's part of who we are. Mintz Insurance, call today and find out how we can help you save on insurance, or visit us at mintzinsurance.com.
I chose DeMarco Louisi Funeral Home, because they treated me with respect and compassion. I couldn't have gone through all this if I didn't have DeMarco Louisi by my side. They did everything that they could to make me happy, and that was important to me and my kids.
At the DeMarco Louisi Funeral Home, we're here for you and your family in your time of need.
I'm Brian Lang and third-generation business owner, Al Shoes, been at the same location since 1961, our 61st year. We specialize in work boots, work shoes, orthopedic shoes, baby walking shoes, and school shoes. We go up to a men's 17 and a woman's 13. It's $5 off, 25, and 10 off 100 if you mention that you've seen this.
More than a century ago, General Tire was born, right here in America. Since then, we've made a name for ourselves, by making tires you can depend on. Tires built to handle any road this country can throw at them, and relied on by every kind of driver. So you know that no matter where life takes you, with General Tire, anywhere is possible.
Welcome back to Around South Jersey, we're all talking about what a great night we've had getting together, and we hope you've enjoyed some of our reminiscing and some of the accomplishments. And Joe, I think that when we look at, you know, this team, and we were, Jimmy, you had served with John Hollingshead before, but I'll tell you, I guess the one thing we didn't talk about was, John unfortunately contacted, contracted, or contacted pancreatic cancer, didn't live a long period of time, but was one of the nicest people you would ever meet in your life. And one of the other nice people was his wife, Molly. And I remember, Jimmy, I think you were there, we were over, pretty much on his deathbed, and we were visiting with him, and his desire to Jim and I was that Molly replace him, and to all of our credits, we all, you know, went along with that, and it was a great opportunity for her to replace her, unfortunately, she didn't win in the runoff election, Dave Adam had defeated her, but what a wonderful lady as well, they were great.
She was unbelievable people, John was a lot of fun to be with, he was, uh, he was a team guy.
Yes, he was.
A gentleman.
Absolute gentleman, but you're right, you said at the beginning of the show, he never could find his wallet.
Now, that's short hands.
No, he lets you take him to lunch anytime you wanted to, and, uh...
Jim, a good time with him.
True story with John, go ahead.
He was a great firefighter.
Yeah, I was going to mention, he was heavily involved in that. He was a big help to me when I became Director of Public Safety, especially with the fire department, and he lobbied for those guys, but he also understood my position and the difficulty, I was, the difficult position I'm in, you know, because things cost money, and, you know, but we ended up getting some things done, and if I ever had a question, I always went to John first, if we go to the fire department. What a great bunch of guys down there, too, I mean, they were fantastic.
He was my golf buddy, true friend, in fact, I did the ceremonies, him and Molly, got married, I did that, true.
I bet you that's super, that's great.
Well, I, John always said, Jim, when you're in Trenton someday, can you take me with you? That's a true story, I said, sure, John, well, it just so happened, and John was at the time the Public Safety Director, uh, we were looking for a lot more funding for municipal government, police, fire, rescue, uh, arguing with the state to get more funding, so my good friend Doug Palmer, who was the mayor of the city of Trenton, um, put this whole thing together in Trenton, that we were going to march on the State House. I thought, oh, good, John, John, good opportunity for John to go, right? And Susie Herman, police officer, so what I'm saying is a true story, uh, she drives us up, and I take him into the State House, you know, and things, before the march was the War Memorial, which is, you know, a couple blocks away, if you've been up there, so I take him through, and he, I sort of like this, take him down the cafeteria and things, and people I was introducing him to, so we walk over to the War Memorial, and there's thousands of people there, you know, chanting and all, and Doug Palmer's, you know, I'm saying this whole thing, and I'm down front with John, and I wave, and, um, you get some politicians getting up, making some comments, yeah, 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 like, you know, Assemblymen or Senators and all. So I'm down there, and Doug said, before we start this march, I can't think of somebody better than my good friend from the city of Millville, Jim Parent, leading this march, but, you know, he knows I'm involved with all this stuff up there. I give a 30-second quick, I'm getting out of here, you know, so we go back down. And he says, I, you know what we're going to do, Jim Parent is going to lead this march.
Oh, no kidding?
True story, so I go, I wish Joyce Van Damme was still alive, because she'll tell you this, too. So, there's this big banner.
Are you walking into, right?
I have, John is on one side, and I'm on the other, this banner, we're walking through Trenton, going to the State House, screaming and yelling. And all he would say is something, I can't believe this, I can't believe this is happening.
He was psyched, he was psyched.
And we get there, of course, you know.
He laughed a lot, John, he liked to laugh.
He laughed about that, and of course, Joyce that night called, because she'd call me whenever she'd see me on TV, because I had a, you know, Michael Aaron, you know him, you know, he sticks the microphone in your face, you know, I'm at the State House, and he throws this thing in my face, and said, you know, you seem to be somebody very important. I'm going, that's the wrong thing to say to me, you know, I'm no more important than anybody here.
Come on, tell me about it.
No, no, no.
Yeah, but you were the president of the Leganis.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not that, yeah, I never, Jim, I swear to you, I've never thought I'm more important than anyone else, that's who I am.
You've been in the third room with me, buddy, we know where it was.
So Joyce, Joyce always, Joyce would call me, six, Jim, I saw you on TV, and John, I'd tell John that, but, uh, he was just a dry sense of humor.
Yeah.
But truly someone who was a friend for life, as you know, Jim, we visited him at a very difficult time, uh, you know, truly, uh, one of the darkest moments of my life, losing a fellow like good friend John Hollingshead, so.
Freeholder Joe.
You know, my wife, and still, Carl, she's going to hate me, she has these bells, she knits.
Yeah, well, we're back.
Talking about John Hollingshead, all right, and we ride around to all these places, you know, uh, where people are buried, you know, and she puts these little bells on their graves. Every Christmas, she puts one on John's, every Christmas, of course, she can't drive anymore, so I drive her around to all these places.
That's a good thing.
And she does that, but speaking of John, and, you know, she makes sure that he has one of these bells that she has done, Tony Surrace has every one, they have a separate Christmas tree with her bells on.
Oh, my goodness.
Her bells on, it goes back, I don't know how many years, but we, speaking of John, we still remember John Hollingshead.
Well, you can't forget, because it's like, it's almost like your high school football or baseball team or whatever, when you serve together, and you go to, you're almost, sometimes you feel like you're at war, at times, you're battle brothers, you know, because you're facing the community at some of the tough times that we had to, you know, and they're, you know, what are you doing here, where's this money going, you know, accusing you of things, you know, whatever.
Exactly.
You kind of be, you kind of form this brotherhood, if you all get along, and you are on the same page, you know, and you, you know, so you have a connection lifelong, you know what I'm saying? It's like the, it's like the, you know, it's like the huddle on a football team, or where there's guys you played basketball and baseball with, you know what I mean? You know, it's kind of, it's...
It's part of it.
Yeah, you know, so, you know.
And true friends.
Yeah, and you do, yeah, you do, and, you know, we all think about John, you know, you know.
County Commissioner Soleo also said that he was good, John was a great man, God bless his soul and his family, that he helped him first time he ran in city government, so. Anyway, Joe, I know you've got to get out of here, buddy, thank you for coming in, it was good to see you.
This is great, you kidding me? I just wish I had a little bit of hair like I had in that one photo you had up there, wasn't much, but I had some.
Moustache was darker, too.
It sure was. I think I was taller, too.
There it is.
Say, look at that.
Oh, my God, I look like I'm, what am I getting into, that's what my... Are you kidding me?
Are you serious?
Anyway, we'll be back to wrap up the program without former Freeholder Director Joe Durella, right after these messages. Thanks for being with us, buddy.
See you, buddy.
Take care. It was fun.
More than a century ago, General Tire was born, right here in America. Since then, we've made a name for ourselves, by making tires you can depend on. Tires built to handle any road this country can throw at them, and relied on by every kind of driver. So you know that no matter where life takes you, with General Tire, anywhere is possible.
At Complete Care, we are patients serving patients. I choose to bring myself and my children to Complete Care, because we are a one-stop shop. We use dental, we use medical, I feel as though the quality of care here is great. I love working here. I feel great to work at a place that serves the community, there's a lot of people in need. To me, patients serving patients means we've been in your shoes. We know what great care means to us, and we want to provide that for you.
At Mintz Insurance, we're proud to have been serving our customers for nearly 80 years, offering 30 different insurance products for your auto, home, and business. And to help ensure that you're getting the best rates possible, we give you up to three quotes for every policy, so you can choose what's right for you. At Mintz, we're part of the community, local representatives, supporting events, and proud of it. It's part of who we are. Mintz Insurance, call today and find out how we can help you save on insurance, or visit us at mintzinsurance.com.
Welcome back to Around South Jersey, Jim Quinn along with Jeff Trout and Jim Parent. Uh, 25 years ago, on the 13th of this month, actually, we were sworn in, the four, or the five of us, Joe Durella, of course, had to leave, but John Hollingshead, who passed away, Jimmy, was, when John passed, Jeff, were you, you were still with us, did, was, did you go to the Freeholder?
That was at the Freeholder, boy.
He was a Freeholder.
So this would have been John's second term.
This was John's second term, I'll tell you, uh, when John's, when, John lost by one vote to Vicki Marshall.
I remember that, I remember that.
And did not ask for...
And he voted for.
Yeah, he voted for.
Molly voted for.
That he voted for Molly.
And he didn't ask for a recount.
And did not ask for a recount.
How about that?
He's a class, huh? Could you imagine?
Ask, uh, how, who?
That is a genuine individuality.
I mean, where would you...
Because everybody out in today's world, oh, it was cheating, oh, they were stuffing about, oh, there's a guy, we got to find a vote.
Look at the steal that poor Trump went through, and he lost by 7, no, and they stole it on him, they stole the election.
He, uh, you know, he just refused to get, to have anything questioned, you know, ballot, you know, anything that wasn't counted. Uh, that's the way he is, you know, but he did give, come back later, and he, you know, he won, you know, about it was, but, you know, another experience, I know we were talking a little bit...
He worked at Mall Brothers, right?
Yeah.
I thought it was Duran.
Duran.
Duran, he worked for Duran Glass, a purchasing agent, yeah, a purchasing agent, but truly remarkable. But just getting him to Trenton like that, he was like, you know, taking a child to the zoo.
Oh, yeah, he enjoyed, he enjoyed, he enjoyed governing.
He loved it.
He loved it, he really did.
He loved talking people, too.
He did, he really did, he never had a bad day in office.
No, that's for sure.
I can't say the same thing, but he never, it's never seemed like he did.
Never loses composure, you know, no matter how, you know, first of all...
And if he didn't know something, he didn't try to BS his way around it.
Absolutely.
I can remember him saying, and I took notice of this early on, I'm not sure about that, but I'll get back to you.
That's correct.
Because, you know, you're not going to, what am I going to say to people, you know?
Yeah.
It's like kids in the classroom, they know when you're trying to BS, if they ask you a history question, you don't know. They know if you're trying to get around them with something, you know, they could find out, so.
One of the first lessons you have to learn, because, you know, it's going to happen to you as an elected official, and one of these classes I would, newly-elected officials, I would chair up, you know, talk about municipal government. It's a game that people will play with you. In other words, if you're sitting up there, and there's always somebody that people don't like you, you have to understand, you know.
They research, and they know the answer before they ask the question.
Absolutely, they know the answer before they ask.
Oh, I know, I know.
And the worst thing to do is try to fumble your way through, and now they're going to stand up, and now they're going to tell you what the answer is.
Right.
It's called the game of I got you.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
And I said this at my training sessions, Jim, that exact thing, they're going to play the game of I got you, and they would laugh about it, and we'd go to the state, to the conference, and I'd be walking the hall or something, somebody, I got you, because it's happened to them, so in government, if you don't know, you know, just say, hey, look, I have to get back to you. Absolutely, and John was that way.
But, but, but the second rule is to get back to them.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, yeah.
And make sure you do.
Make sure you get back to them.
Make sure you do.
And he did.
Yeah, he did, yeah, he did.
He loved it up in Trenton, he just, you know, just getting around, seeing people, getting introduced to people.
I was with Noel Brennan last night, what a great guy, the Soccer Association and all, and he was telling me that he, when John went in, that's just when he saved the child or whatever, down at Holly Berry Court.
Yeah, I remember that.
He said that he actually, John got burned under the mask, I didn't know that, but he was, I guess, working.
He would never talk about something like that.
No, he didn't, no.
Never brag about it.
Never say anything about it, you would never, as a candidate, as a commissioner, you would never even refer to that, you know?
And like you said, Jim, I mean, I taught his sister in, in school, and I know they came from a poor, you know, mom, single mom, you know, raising the kids and all that stuff, but yet, to his credit, he worked hard, he got a good position with Duran, and had a nice house out on, you know, Fertin Road, and I got to tell you a really neat story, what he had wanted before he died was to get a vintage Corvette, collector's Corvette. Well, thanks to Jim's wife, my business was good for me, because she was buying all those bells. So I said to him, John, I said, I'll tell you what, I'm going to lend you the money to get this car, this isn't a gift, I'm going to lend you the money, and then when you sell your truck, yeah, then we'll square up, which I did, and I said, yeah, I want to get a ride in that car. Like, gosh, he took me out Fertin Road, man, it's things, ba-boom, 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 they sit low on the ground.
They fly, too.
Yeah, they do.
They fly, man.
So, but the nice thing was that I was, you know, happy he was able to get it.
That was nice of you to do that.
Yeah, well, luckily, I could then, and I, and nobody deserved it more than that man did, and what was wonderful after, down the road and everything else, everything, I got settled, Molly gave me the money back and things, but at least I was able to give him something he wanted for that six weeks, or, you know, whatever he had of time, that, just a really good guy. Like, Jimmy, you and I were there, there two, three years.
Very difficult, tearful moments.
It really was, but that's... Oh, it's horrible, this isn't, it's a tough one.
Your cancer battle, I've been through that, you know, you just never know, but...
Me, too.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're cancer survivors.
I wonder what makes me lose, I've had twice, and I know you've had yours, and, uh, I don't know.
But just, just to share those moments with good people. But just, just to share those moments with, with good people, Jeff, it, it's like.
You know, there's a lot of great people in Millville, ain't there?
Yeah.
Always has been, yeah.
Yeah, it's the truth.
Yeah, you know, just regular people who get involved in things and, and dude, I'm good friends with Craig Agerson, for example, just top of my head.
Yeah.
President of Thunderbolt.
For years.
My God, the work he does there.
Absolutely.
Unbelievable. And the scholarship money that they give out year in, year out, you know, to, to kids. And what, and, and, but, but, and, and the dinners that they put on for, for the teams and, and, and support for the programs. I mean, it's, I mean, it's just time. I mean, and, and, but he, he loves it.
It's a, it's a city of volunteers.
It is.
I mean, we know these people, you know?
And Timmy helped put the building together out there.
Yeah.
We talked about.
Nick Acel.
Nick Acel, that he gave us the 75,000 to finish doing the building. And Timmy told me one day, he had 70 volunteers, he had to sit, turn them away and they were laying the floor. Had a wonderful thing though, as you think about this, how lucky we are. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention Denise Arigo. This woman does everything for the homeless, for, she starts a lunch program. You contribute.
Yeah, contribute to her and feeds people and my goodness, she's so grateful.
And you don't, the public doesn't see them, public doesn't know them.
Yeah.
You know, but we as officials or people who get involved in, in organizations.
See, see where people do.
So many of them, and Denise is one of them, Jim, as you know, I mean.
Boy, she's something.
She is.
Yeah, she is.
Which I get her to run for city commission.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, she had cancer now.
She had a little bout there.
Is she better?
She's great. Yeah, she had wonderful news the other day.
Hear stories and I.
Yeah.
But I know during COVID, uh, and, and even before that, you know, she was, she does a lot, she does, and she does a lot for the communities, for the, for the people that are, that are, that are in the shadows.
Yeah, that's true.
You know?
They don't want the, that, you know, they, they just like to do what, what they're doing. And they're happy in doing it.
Yeah. And I'll tell you, I've gone down and volunteered for the M25, you know, the homeless program and some really neat people. This was an interesting, sad story. A couple of years ago, I'm down there, a nice kid, maybe in his mid twenties, his first name was Travis, and he was sharp as a tack. And we're talking, I said, Travis, why are you homeless? He said, Mr. Quinn, I'm a heroin addict. And unfortunately, six months later, he died.
Yeah.
But, you know, drugs is what causes a lot, and alcohol for some of the older ones.
Yeah, or just, just circumstances.
Sure, exactly.
Parents die, you haven't had good direction growing up, you don't know how to navigate, maybe in life, through life.
That's true.
You haven't been taught, you know, and so, well, how do I go get an apartment or how do I go get a job? Where do I get a shower and get clothes to go?
Yeah.
You know, to an interview to get a, I mean, it's, it's a tough world out there for some folks, you know? You can never, you can never lose sight of that. People need help sometimes, you know? And, and it's not a bad thing to help them.
Well, this fellow named Lance, super guy. When I first went there, I thought he was part of the group volunteering. Similar situation you just talked about, Jeff. He just, you know, the parents and things worked out, they were taking care of him, then they died and then he used the money he had and he used the money up.
Nothing left.
Yeah. And it was like, here I am, you know, just again, a wonderful person. So I enjoy going down there and seeing some of the people and talking to them. And, uh, you know, and Denise is always there. And there are a lot of other people. I'd be Bonnie Jackson.
Is she still involved? Is that still, is she still involved in that? And Denise, is she still?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. She put together the Share and Care Lunch in Cindy Cook. There's the Stiles people from down in Haleyville that all, they do the Share and Care Luncheons. They go in and make the food up and everything for the, even when the weather isn't bad.
There's people like that.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, you know, I, I still think that, you know, it makes you, as an elected official, just want to work that much harder.
Yeah.
That's out there, uh, to support people who are volunteers and let them know that we're there to support them in any way we can.
Yeah.
Because we're in the position, you know, we're, we're out front, you know, all the time. We're under the gun all the time. But boy, if it wasn't for volunteers in our community, I mean, we have.
Well, look at your sporting, all the sports, the baseball, the football, the basketball, all the things you guys have done, I've done, you know, it's just giving back to the community. We're, and the midget football. Now, what a great feeder system that is. Kwan, you mentioned.
Kwan Bowleg and Jeff Mills. I coached them both. They were great kids when I coached them.
Yeah, they're super guys.
They were great, you know, the great, great to coach, super kids, super in the classroom. And, uh, they are doing it right. They're making these kids toe the line.
Exactly what I said.
And some of these kids are not the, you know, they're street, some of these kids are street kids.
Tough at home.
Yep. And these guys are making it, and they're making it happen. So, you know, good for them. Good for them. You had the Carl Franks in the past, Jim Parents, the Bill McCaffreys, you know, all that.
Yeah.
They're keeping it going.
If, if you have the time to just try to do something positive for your community is so important.
Yeah.
And the problems, um, that we've had in our community, uh, coming back was to get organized with people in the neighborhoods, working within the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Getting involved in the athletic things as we, as they have. Um, it can help turn around a, a, a community, uh, that, that's in need.
Yeah.
They, they can look up to. And it has happened. I've seen it and I keep referring it to also, Jim, because I'm there, uh, midget league, you know? I mean, I see the hardworking, honest people who are there, not coaching Xs and Os, but how they preach and talk to the kids.
Yeah.
Which is so important because they can relate to them.
Role models to them.
They're role models. Having our high school coaches there, you know?
Yes.
You know, is important. Having our high school football players there. My gosh, you're an idol.
Yeah, that's true.
I know what it's like, Jeff, you know?
Yeah, man.
We played, the kids come up to you, they want your chin strap or, you know, kids look up to you.